Join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are back here at City Hall and we are going to attempt here to do videoing, the standstill camera, so that we can continue to show this on cable. What we have to do is make sure everyone speaks into the microphone and so that the sound we picked up as best as possible. First thing is always to approve the agenda. Is there any questions, additions to the agenda? The only thing I got is Ken would like to kind of give us an update of our population projection that he has to report to the Met Council. And so I'm going to actually have that under miscellaneous. So with that, I guess I'll approve the agenda with that change.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, passes four zero. First thing on the agenda is, again, we have someone that we'd like to recognize who has served on one of our boards and commission. And today we have Julia Bartuszek, who was our youth member on our park board. And you know, I think it's really special when we have the youth of our community get involved in our city and what happens in our city. So I'd really like to put out a special thank you to Julia for serving on the park board. And I guess Amy, was she?
She was wonderful and helpful on the park board. And I always had good ideas, so we enjoyed having Julia on the board.
Well, that's great. Appreciate it, Julia. So I would like you to come up and Patrick will take our picture and... What do you want to do, Patrick? Straight over here?
Yeah.
Okay, New Prague City Council presents to Julia Bartuszek, park board member, in recognition and appreciation for your volunteer service to the park board in the city of New Prague. Thank you very much and good luck in your college career.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda. Looks like Bruce, welcome. Been a while.
Here on behalf of the New Prague Utilities Commission, you have a resolution for an amendment to the Simba Agency Agreement. Just a, I'll do a quick review of particulars of this amendment. Simba is our wholesale power supplier, of which we are full requirements member. Meaning, we can only buy our wholesale power or energy through the agency. And we're committed to that until 2050. The agency was formed in 1977 by 18 member cities and their original contracts go through 2030. In 2009, the agency offered an extension to all members for continuance of the agreement through 2050. Of the 18 members, 15 decided to extend their contracts, with Rochester and Austin and Wasika deciding not to renew their contracts. Just recently though, Wasika had a change of heart and they did extend their contract to 2050. Most of the reasoning for making an amendment to the agency agreement is that current agreements do not allow for cities other than full requirement members to enter into contractual agreements with the agency and its members. This amendment will allow either a non-2050 city, being Rochester or Austin, or other Minnesota cities to become project members and have contractual agreements with the agency and its members on various projects. A couple of examples where this amendment would prove beneficial would be if the agency wanted to partner with a 2030 city or another non-agency member to develop a solar farm or a gas turbine project. Having this amendment in place will make such projects available to the agency and all of the government's issues will be in place. From the board and membership's perspective, we do not see any negative outcomes of this amendment and feel it could open up some opportunities that would otherwise not be available to us. It also takes care of some of the housekeeping and clarification parts to the agreement. In order for this amendment to be passed, it needs to be approved by two-thirds of the utility commissions, the city councils, and the members' representatives. The Utilities Commission by its own resolution approved this amendment at its June meeting and is asking the city council to concur and approve the amendment to the agency agreement. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read through the amendment. It's a lot of legal jargon in there. And if you have and you have any questions, I would stand to take those right now and try to answer them for you.
Well, I appreciate Bruce, you taking the effort to make it understandable language. That helped me greatly. Thank you.
Okay.
The only other easier way we could have done this would have been to formally add Simba, incorporate the proposed amendments as far as a strike and red and add in no to the original agency agreement. But Bruce would tell you that he's got a small booklet on that and we didn't think you necessarily would want to have to look at it in quite that detail. But that would be the alternative if requested do so, to be able to look at that change.
I know the commission had a few questions coming in, you know. To pick this apart and scrutinize it, really what has been done is the Board of Directors, of which I'm a part of, helped put this together, this document. And then the lawyers, of course, had to put all the legal components to it. And then it was fairly well scrutinized by all of the utility commissions before we actually brought it to the consensus of the utility commissions and the city council. Because we obviously didn't want to have to do this twice. And we have 18 members all having to do this and all having to be in agreement. So it did get scrutinized quite a bit. The board really did make a lot of changes to what was initially offered up by staff just because we knew that there'd be issues back in our individual communities. And had a little better feel with what we thought was a good deal for every member city. And I feel fairly confident that a lot of good choices were made here. And I think it'll serve New Prague well going into the future, so.
Was it unanimous at the Utilities Commission?
Yes, it was.
Mike, we can have Scott take a look at this.
Yeah, Scott did review this.
And he did bless it?
You can generally assume, and I think we've told you that past, is we don't bring these kind of agreements to the table for you to review without taking it through the city attorney for review.
Okay. But any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one. Why are Rochester and Austin not going through to 2050 as the rest are?
They feel, two things. One is they feel that they could possibly go on, they're big enough that they can go on the open market and possibly buy energy on their own at or better pricing than what they think we can do so as an agency. They also have quite a bit of generation assets of their own. So that gives them a little bit of bargaining power to go out on the open market and still cover their needs with some of their own generation. The rest of the member cities, we pool all those resources. We feel that they're possibly making a mistake in doing that because they also walk away from all their assets in Simba in 2030. So, obviously, they think they can do better on the open market. And that's their reasoning. But we're already seeing they're coming back to us and wanting to partner up in certain projects. So all of a sudden then, Simba maybe was doing the right thing to begin with. So that kind of makes us feel good in a way that we're managing Simba in a way that's still attractive to outsiders, so.
So I assume at some point in time they could come back as a full member?
I think they could, but there's going to be some consequences involved with doing that by delaying that decision. Wasika was already scrutinized a little bit, you know. Why weren't you willing, you know, back in '09 to make the commitment? And now, all of a sudden, when things aren't looking so good on the open market for them, being really small, they decided to come back into the fold, so to speak. So I don't think they'll just be able to walk back in without, you know, some financial exposure.
Bruce, leaving, with two big population centers like Austin and Rochester leaving, does that put us at any risk for increased expense or anything else to that?
Actually, it probably puts us at a market advantage because also in 2030 is when the majority of our debt issuance is paid for and they will have paid for that. So that almost leaves us debt-free at that time. So we'll have those assets available to just the remaining members. It could be that a whole asset doesn't have a whole lot of value then, but it could still be a very viable asset also. So, no, as far as the numbers go and the debt issuance, that should be fine. Because that debt will be taken care of by that state. That's the reason the 2030 contract was in place because that's when those debts would have had to expire by then before they were allowed to leave the agency to begin with. Everything was based on that 2030 time threshold. And now, they've extended the contract for Sureco's compliance into the market. So that made us a viable asset, made it a viable asset into the 2050 market, along with our solar projects. And you always got to keep in mind that anything that you do in the power industry, when you buy an asset in the power generation, it's usually a 25 to 30-year commitment. So therefore, you got to have long-term contracts in order to keep that alive.
Any other questions for Bruce? Well, thank you, Bruce. That was very informative. Good job. With that in mind, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next one, I assume Ken, you're going to take this with the merchant payments or building permit payments?
I will. I can actually summarize the memo I wrote a little better than how it's written here. So, councilor, remember, planning and building departments are implementing an online permitting system with our new software. We have not actually turned on the online permitting feature at this point. This is one of the last steps we need to take care of in order to take payments online, basically through credit card, as the source of payment. We've been working on bugs for basically the whole year, leading up to this point. We're finally getting those worked out. Things are working well, so we're ready to go live, probably within the next few weeks here. But before we can do that, we do have this agreement for the payment provider for our online payments. A little background information, EnterGov, our building permit software, is owned by Tyler Technologies. We currently do take utility payments online. And we were hoping to use the same online payment provider as utilities use. Well, even though Tyler Technologies owns EnterGov, it's basically a different software and a different team of people that work on that. So we do not have the ability to use that same provider for online payments that Utilities has without substantial programming fees, which could have been upwards of about $5,000 is what we're being told. So we didn't want to go through that trouble. Basically, EnterGov directed us to this company, Persolvent. It's actually a Minnesota-based company. And discussing with them, we are looking at a couple of different options. And if you go on, it's about the fifth page back, you'll see what I highlighted in yellow and starred. There's a model where patrons can pay. It's basically a 3% fee to pay online or government entity pay, which is 2.79% plus a 20% transaction fee. Been talking to Utilities and I was thinking this as well, recommending not having it show up as a customer convenience fee on the payment. We want people to use the permitting software online to get their permits. When people come into the counter right now, just for an example, a roofing permit costs $86. It can take 15 minutes sometimes to issue a roofing permit. And generally, it's just Mary Jo's time to do that. Whereas the convenience fee for a roofing permit to be issued online is $2.60 roughly. So saving the staff time and then obviously have them, they can fill out a permit any time of the day. The one thing this will do is increase our credit card fees. And we want to take basically the second half of 2016 to determine how many people are taking advantage of it and probably up our fees by, you know, maybe it's $3 for a roofing permit, just to work that in to the fee for what everybody's paying rather than have a different fee for people that pay online or in person. Because we really do want to encourage everybody to pay online and hopefully people will do that. So what we have in front of you tonight is an agreement and an application, basically. A couple of different things that are, one is called the Payment Provider Agreement for Submerchants. And the other one is the Merchant Services Agreement for Submerchants. We did have city attorney Scott Riggs review these two agreements. Noted basically that everything looks fine, the sign is submitted. Some of the concerns we had initially was, you know, are there any credit card fees and information that we're liable for that are stored locally? And the answer was no. This is all payment information that is sent directly to them as an online merchant, taking the payment. We do not see that. We do not store that. We do not have that liability as far as that's concerned. So data breaches at City Hall wouldn't affect any credit card data there, not stored locally. So that was really the biggest issue that we wanted to make sure we were not on the hook for, and we are not. So unless you have any other questions, I would recommend approval of the two agreements that are attached to the memo. And we would get the online payment portal open and open up the online permit process shortly thereafter.
How are you going to let people know that it's available?
We do plan to put information in the newsletter, obviously in the city website. And we'll be telling people that come in to pick up permits. We've been having people ask occasionally and when we'd have that ability to do that. So it might take some time to get the information out there, but we'll use every available method of electronic media, newsletter, and word of mouth, hopefully too.
Facebook?
Facebook, definitely.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one on the memo. Where it talks about limits. I think, I don't know, have you verified those with Visa, with their regulations?
As far as...
The limits where it says nothing over 1,500?
That's our limit locally, because we don't want people paying for $14,000 building permits and reading a credit card before.
Right, but you might want to check with Visa to see if that part is, if you can do that.
Okay.
Sometimes you have to determine, qualify a fee type, not by a limit amount.
Oh, I get what you're saying. Yeah, no, actually that's through our software, through EnterGov. Has that limit built in for the online portion. So they wouldn't even be able to pay for a permit if it exceeded that amount. Because it would bring them to that online portal through that, if that makes any sense at all.
It does, but there's another, I'll talk to you after me. There was an issue too about Visa having other regulations. So just making sure our software is in compliance with those regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion. Do you want to approve one at a time or can we do them both, Ken?
You could do them both at the same time, just include them in the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Payment Provider Agreement for the Submerchant and the Merchant Services Agreement for Submerchants.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion by David Brusick, second by Amy Jurick. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Just an aside note, Ken, how is the software? Is it everything you expected?
We're getting there.
Okay.
Mary Jo's probably feeling most of the hurt on that.
How come it's always on Mary Jo's shoulders?
We're getting there. We're relying heavily on Mary Jo to help get the bugs worked out. Taking time, but we're getting there. It'll work well.
Mike, I think you're next.
Yes. What you have in front of you is the, is that picking up a lot enough? The form S, is the SC-16, Schedule Form for Long-Some Pension Plans Recording Year 2016. That was received from the New Prague Fire Relief Association. As you can see from the enclosed materials, the city's required contribution for 2017 for the fire relief pension fund is $0. That would be the third year in a row for 15, 16, and 17. There is not a required contribution as required through the formula that's used to calculate that. As you can see also, the Rural Fire Association is a partner, excuse me, in this program and has been since 2012. They're in at the full participation level, at a 50/50 share. There is no longer any phase in of that, but again, with the contribution being 0, their contribution also likewise would be 0 for 2017. I had a conversation today with Steve Rindah, who is the secretary for the Fire Relief Association. And as I make mention in my memo, I am expecting the conversation to be forthcoming for this fall, for them to take a look at whether there's a change. If you recall, we had that discussion last fall, the joint meeting between the city and rural. Recommended back to the rural and the city that we not make any changes last year, but that you can again take a look at it this fall, on every other year type basis. So under the current arrangement, there's no contribution. And if in that discussion it ultimately would lead to a change, as long as that change occurs after the first year, then there's no impact on the contribution amount that you're looking at at the present time for 2017.
Yeah, I think, I remember as we left it, that both the rural and the city and the meetings we had with the fire department was that, you know, we felt that we just added something and we thought, you know, if you're willing, we'll go back to the table at the end of this year. So I assume that this fall, we will get our notice that they would like to sit down with us again.
We saw a number of handwritten notations in the materials you received. That was an attempt and an effort to help you understand where the numbers were coming from in case there was a question. And so that's the reason we see those additional notations.
Good. Good news when there's no city revenue that has to be, when no expenses have to be used.
It's always a vicious cycle if you take a look at this process, that you can see with the pension amount that you set is that there's a fixed contribution and that for every year of service, that there's a fixed cost to providing that benefit as long as the assets of the fund are doing reasonably well and to receive the seat contributions from the fire insurance program. You can see that that's had a good impact on what we're required to contribute. When you take a look at the historical changes that occurred from the late 2079 timeframe going into 2010, when there was a downturn in the economy and a significant impact into most everybody's pension fund. And I think there was upwards of a 30%, 30% decline in their fund. That's where you can see that the accrual of that impact to the city was fairly significant, thus necessitating those rather large contributions in 2010, 11, 12, 13. And then finally, the last year was in 14. So it's kind of a diverse impact that as you take a look at the request and you increase the pension benefit, that as long as the fund is doing well and our assets are to pay the pension benefits, it's okay. It's going to go south, then you start to have some impacts, so. Your only action tonight is just doing now, like receipt of the form and that's all you need to do.
You don't have to do a motion or anything?
Yeah, I do a motion, but now I've received the SC-2016. Yeah, the form SC-16.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to accept the SC-16 form for the Relief Association. Second. Second by Dave Brusick. Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition?
The reason to do that, just so you know, the reason it comes to you like that is the requirement that you acknowledge and aware of what that financial contribution is so that you don't get surprised when the budget process comes along. If for any reason there was a required contribution and the city failed to include it in their annual calendar or budget, they have a right to go to the county and to have that levy against the city property taxpayers to pay for that. So if for any reason there was a disagreement or something didn't get included, there's a required contribution, they have an alternate way of ensuring that that contribution were paid.
Okay, it's good to know. Next on the agenda, I think we tabled this at the last meeting because Amy was going to go to the park board and get their input on who they would recommend. And I think Amy, you want to shed a light on that?
The park board recommended Maggie Bass to be the park board representative on the Joint Powers. The one thing we didn't, I know on our Joint Powers agreement, we have term. It's just, it's open until we change it. But I'd like to have that park person each year, we put on the calendar, maybe Ken on the meeting, just to verify that that person still has the interest and wants to do it, so.
Okay, good. Any other comments regarding our position? I mean, I guess if you're looking for my appointments, I would say we would go with Sean Ryan, who is currently on the joint committee, and Maggie Bass representing the park board, and Ken Andich representing city staff. Anyone have any questions?
No, I concur.
Okay, so why don't you, I mean, that's who I recommended. Just have a motion to approve those and second.
I'll make a motion to appoint Maggie Bass from the park board, and Andich as city staff, and councilor Sean Ryan.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, good. Now, next on the agenda is a consent agenda. Anyone have any questions? I got, I think this is the first year we got a six-month kind of synopsis of how the city has been doing versus budget. And you can let Patty know, I think that was, I saw, I found out it was very useful.
It'll be coming court.
Okay, now courtly, great.
But I mean, she works as the first one here to try to give this a change.
Right, and I think it was great. I really, really enjoyed reviewing it and kind of seeing how we're going as the year goes on rather than always wait it, you know, to the end. Thank Patty for her hard work on that. Anyone have any other questions or issues on the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Second by Dave Brusick. If there's no questions, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay. So on miscellaneous, I think we'll start with Ken. If you just kind of want to give us that update on our population projection for the Met Council, that'd be great.
This is an annual report we take a look at every year on our population estimates. Keep in mind, the estimates we always get are for the previous year on April 1. So we're actually looking at, our current estimate is from April 1, 2015. That's current information as we get. Just to go back one year, our population was 7439. With our current estimate as of April 1, 2015, that number jumps over 7,500 to 7,508. So up about 69 people. Households up 26 from 2014 to 2015. Now, again, that doesn't correspond directly to our, you know, calendar year permits because we have, you know, April 1 to April 1 is what we're looking at, so plus 26 people. I do want to note, and I don't want to get into too much detail on this, so I did have to dispute or object to our estimate for the third time in three years. As they initially noted, that from 2014 to 15, that we lost 34 residents. Now, with the number of new houses we had go up and, you know, just general activity we have in the city, obviously, that was... we have in the city, obviously, that was not correct. Their explanation was that they use the American Community Survey data, which is a very, very small sample size, that they use to determine household numbers and average household size. Again, and they tie that to the metro, which is seeing more empty nesters, smaller families, et cetera. Now, we're obviously split right down the middle between what would be the Met Council area versus, you know, more outstate Minnesota with the sewer county, and our persons per household number is completely different if you go from one side of Main Street to the other. I've been arguing for, for many years that why can't you just have one person per household figure, rather than have one for north of Main Street, one for south of Main Street that are drastically different? So I talked to the State Demographics Center, and you can see their, their letter here on page two that I actually just got in the mail today, and that's why you're seeing this as an adder to the agenda. And they conferred, and Met Council conferred as well, that our average people per household information was too low on their initial estimate, and that's how they adjusted everything up to a number that I do agree with, that actually might be up a little bit than what I would have anticipated. I figured somewhere growth of, well, 50 some residents from 14 to 15, and lo and behold, we're up about 69. But households, that is a not disputable number. We have permit data that they get that from. So really, all tied back to number of people per household that they, they estimated. And, you know, I have a lot of data. We can talk to the school district, enrollment's been up there as well, and number of kids. So I have pretty good background of data, but unfortunately, every year, we're going to have the same discussion with them because they do not look at your previous estimate. They go back to the year 2010 with the census information, and then extrapolate back. So every year, we're going to have to probably dispute this until 2020 with the new census information. But anyway, it's important for us to review this every year because it is used for financial calculations based on population. So I'm happy with the outcome, and hopefully, the council is as well. So still a little more doing.
So you're going to be on a first-name basis with them recently?
They knew you when I called this year.
Oh, Ken, annual call.
Yep, and they, they expected it, so. Same argument that we've used for three years.
Couple of examples and references, our state aid for streets, or our LGA is all based on these population numbers, so that's why it's critical that we do this.
Thank you, Ken, for making it as accurate as possible. I really appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Let's see. Jim, do you have anything?
I do not.
Bruce, anything else?
Let's give you a quick update. Mike and I are really close to getting an agreement with Minnesota Valley Electric in regards to serving the industrial park. We've been going back and forth a lot of times, but I think we're, we're pretty close. It's all for signatures, put it that way, so hopefully, that's going to happen. And then, you've maybe seen in the newsletter that we sent out with utility billing, we're starting our advanced metering infrastructure program, and so we're replacing water and electric meters throughout the city. And we hope to get that project actually rolling out sometime in August. The network equipment is being installed as we speak, and actually, most of it's up and running already. So it's kind of an exciting time for us as a utility to start bringing in some of that technology, so.
Awesome.
It's going good, so.
Good. Good job. Ken, anything else?
Nothing more.
Okay. Mike?
Couple of items we got word today that, from MPCA, that the wastewater treatment plant permit application that we submitted back in April, they believe it's complete enough now for processing. So now they'll formally process it after they determine that we submitted all the required items. So we don't know exactly when we're going to get that. It's typically a four-year renewal on that, so it's due this fall, so it's in process. Glenn informed me last week, he's on vacation this week, our sanitary sewer enforcement project up north of the tennis courts and the bus garage, that'll begin probably starting next Monday, the week of the 25th is when that will actually get started. The joint powers agreement, we've been working on with the state since Chris Bowers, wasn't it, was in front of council, the MOU. They've changed managers now as far as who we're working with on the state projects, so we have a new replacement for him. And we've had some meetings between us and the SCH trying to work through that. I'm hoping, I'm optimistic that this week, we should get a draft of the joint powers agreement, hopefully leaving us enough time to have Scott take a look at that before we hopefully are able to bring that to August 1st if all works out. And then on Wednesday night, at 5:30, we've got a meeting with the downtown business community as part of the downtown commercial and the commercial rental rehab program to provide information and to share information about that and to begin to accept pre-applications and find out what kind of interest there is in the downtown. So that'll be this Wednesday at 5:30 up in the council chambers here.
Okay. Good. Just a little question on the wastewater plant fire and that, where does that sit?
The process has been reviewed with the adjusters. They were out last week. Our staff has cleaned out the conveyor system out of there, that a number of the glass enclosures around some of the sensors and lighting, obviously, were broken and are in the system. Some sensors are out, and there's some other balancing issues in there that we've had the league insurance out, and they've had some people knowledgeable of that, and so they're taking a look at precisely what they believe are the items that may be impacted from the fire. We've got backup plans that we're probably going to have to implement, where we're going to have to haul sludge. Glenn has been working with some major committees to take a look at that. That would be a covered item under the insurance claim, at least during the period that we've got to do that, that will haul out enough that'll allow us to continue to stay operational with the rest of the plant. But we need to do some hauling here because we probably won't have it fixed before. We need to unload some of the sludge that we have. On the other front, we also had the league insurance adjuster out last week because of the storm, taking a look at the golf course, parks, some street lights, roof of the wastewater plant a little bit. So again, we're working with them on filling out the information for that insurance claim.
Good. Well, not good that there was damage, but it was, it looks like everything's moving forward, so. Good. I know Glenn's not here, but, you know, they did a great job of cleaning up after the storm, you know, and the parks and then the golf course messed up. And I know, Bruce, I think you had guys out, you know, making sure things worked, and the fire department was out, and Sean actually went out and did a little weather watching that day and that night, and so it's quite a group effort, and that's well appreciated.
If you remember some time ago, we had a question, why we should need to buy that wood chipper well, and it was used extensively here this past week, quite extensively.
Okay. Anything else? Mary Jo?
No.
Amy?
No.
Sean?
I just wanted, I was going to ask Glenn, and I don't know if you guys can answer this question or not, just about the, what the rate of use has been at the outdoor pool? I mean, this year, you guys, are we tracking the numbers of individuals utilizing that?
I don't have any updated information from Janelle, Community Education, but I will certainly ask her for an update on that.
Okay. Any notes?
No, that's it.
David?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Mitch? Well, we appreciate you guys all for coming today. I don't have anything else, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Dave Brusich. All in favor, say aye. Aye. C不留. Thank you, everyone.